You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 12th, 2023 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Okay, welcome everybody to the town of Long Beach Town Council meeting of June 12th of 23. Everybody needs to be quiet. Nobody can hear me. All right. Welcome to the town of Long Beach's Town Council meeting of June 12th, 2023. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just one opening remark. I tried to watch a meeting of the of the Long Beach government and on Zoom, and I couldn't understand a lot of what was said. I think people who are participating in those meetings, particularly those of us here, need to make sure we speak into the microphone and the microphones are turned on and the microphone needs to be close to your mouth. If we're going to provide this degree of transparency, we may need to make sure that it's intelligible. Just a couple of new agenda items. One is stop 29. The other is leaf pickup for unimproved lots. So approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the executive council meeting of May 26th of 2023.
You good? I make that motion?
Okay. Yes, there's a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special council meeting of May 26th of 2023.
I make that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes of the town council meeting of May 8th are still pending. Committee reports, Police Department slash Commission Chief.
Good evening. For the month of May, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 354 calls for service. When compared to 222 calls for service in the previous year for an increase of 132 calls for service, I would attribute the majority of the increase due to officer-initiated productivity, particularly traffic enforcement during the month of May. Also during the month of May, 28 incident reports were documented. A total of 15 individuals were arrested. Three were for felony arrest. One was for possession of meth. One was a felony vehicle pursuit that ended with the driver being arrested for possession of marijuana and resisting law enforcement. And the third felony arrest was for an operating while intoxicated with a prior conviction. Eight individuals were arrested for traffic offenses. Of those eight, four were for operating while intoxicated. The other arrests for the month were for underage consumption of alcohol, a violation of a protective order related to a domestic dispute. Overall, the month was very busy. Also would like to inform everyone that the Police Department is in the process of applying for a grant with the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. We are hopeful to receive four brand-new laptop computers for officers to use within their computer, within their vehicles. We should know in the month of July if we will be the recipient of that grant. And then also here, although it occurred in June, on June 2nd, I just wanted to make everyone aware that we had a multi-jurisdictional arrest that occurred in the town. It has been publicized quite heavily in the Chicago news stations and here locally of an individual that was charged with stalking, intimidation, and harassment. And I would just like to thank our state, local, and federal partners that assisted us on June 2nd in executing the search warrant at the home here in the town of Long Beach. I will add that the individual that was taken into custody, the family was very cooperative. They are still cooperating with us to this day, and the individual remains incarcerated at the La Porte County Jail at this time. And there was no police commission meeting for the month of May.
Any questions? Town Administrator Report, Chief.
The items that I have will be covered within the agenda, Doctor.
Great. Volunteer Fire Department, Tom Yunk.
I'll be taking care of that report for time this evening. Give me one second here. So our month of May statistics for fire calls were about four. We had a trash fire, a brush fire, and a couple of false alarms. For our medical calls, we had a total of five. We had... Can you get this thing to work? We had two sick persons. Two unconscious victims and a lift assist for a total of five. Our statistics are four and a half minute response time for fire calls and 4.2 minutes response for medical calls. To date, our year-to-date statistics for fire, we are slightly down on fire, but we are hugely up on medical calls. We have a year-to-date of 43 versus 29 for the prior year. Average turnout for medical calls is five. Average turnout for fire calls is eight. So that's essentially that report. We have been doing, in terms of the rest of the Fire Department activity, they've been training again at the Michigan City Training Tower, which is a fantastic opportunity for us. Been training out there on hose work last Monday, and we're very pleased with the ability to use that facility. This is not comment period. There's a question in the back.
I just want to talk a little bit about the brush fire that happened last week because of the dry situation in the neighborhood.
Don't want to take public comments.
Yeah, you know what? We probably need to save public comments for the end of the meeting, but save that and we'll definitely answer.
I think it's a good one, especially those of drags even that's coming up.
Good, John.
John, I have a question. Do you have an incident report for that fire at 1302 Lake Shore Drive?
The fire at 1302 is a large enough fire that we have the Fire Marshal from the State of Indiana that comes in and does the fire investigation on that. So they'll be issuing the report. We haven't seen it yet.
But don't we issue an incident report?
We have our own incident report that we use, yes, but in terms of...
Do we have that?
I'm sorry?
Do we have, do we have that?
The Fire Department has it over in their office, yeah.
Okay, so we could have a copy?
You can have a copy of that, yeah.
Okay.
Essentially, the details in terms of the investigation is comes through the State Fire Marshal Office because it's such a
Right.
large monetary loss.
I did. For that one? That's it for your report?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if we want to...
Fire Commission met.
Fire Commission met. We discussed the Public Safety Building. We discussed fire truck financing. At the Budget and Finance Meeting, I think the Clerk, Clerk Perry, has offered to help out with trying to get the truck financing together. We had one quote early on for that, but we need to get some additional quotes in on some banks for the truck financing, and we kind of tasked ourselves with trying to get that done between now and the end of this term. That's essentially all I've got on the Fire Commission.
Public Works, Mary Lou.
Public Works met on May 22nd. We introduced our new employee, Diane Heitman. Lynn will be retiring, but she will be doing some special projects for us. We talked about the five-year capital infrastructure plan for the town. Tom Dolph, who's the Street Department Superintendent, talked about the CCMG, which I think will be covered later. And we talked about the Stop 17 drainage project, and we talked about alley repairs and paving. Later on, we'll talk about the vacant lots. The next meeting is Monday, June 26th.
Okay. Park Board, Joy.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Park Board met on the 23rd. As far as the summer camp and the teacher started on Memorial Day, camp will begin next Monday. We added volleyball camp as a new addition this year. First Saturday, partisan classes will continue through the summer at Community Center. We'll now, starting next week, have regular office hours for our Activities Director, which is Sarah, in room 14. That will be Mondays from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. and Thursdays from 11:00 a.m. to noon. Or complaints can be made through town call if someone wants to use the historical reference in their, at their convenience. And we will have 14 staff to during Clark Park on July 29th during the Community Center open house. We'll be selling posters to benefit the Community Center and just hide a grand opening for our little historical reference room there. And the next meeting will be 6:27 and 6:00 p.m.
Budget and Finance, Mr. Perry.
Oh, what about Community Center?
Oh, I'm sorry, skip Community Center. That's Joy also.
Okay. All right, sorry.
That's okay. Now Budget and Finance, Mr. Perry.
Good evening. Budget and Finance met at 8:30 in the morning on June 7th. And we had Mr. Wall, Chief Swistec, Mike Johnstone, and myself in attendance. The first item on the agenda was cash imbalance positions and revenue and expenses. We, oh, I'm sorry, we had Trista Hudson from Sender and Associates. We were not able to give an accurate number on that because the 2022 bank recs are still in process of being audited and finalized by Sender. So Trista thought it would be best if we hold off on giving those hard numbers until we have those things tied up. So we kind of kick that over to next month. If they're available sooner, which they probably will be, she's reconciling them this week. They should probably be done quicker, and when they are, I can email those figures to the Town Council. We talked about cash management, bank accounts, and lettering CDs. I think that's later in the agenda, so I can address those numbers. We have some pretty positive numbers that we're happy about. We touched on the Lake Shore Drive sewer engineering fee, the potential engineering fee that we have to Michigan City. Nothing really got discussed, other than it's a large number and it's looming. CCMG, we looked at that, capital plan. We decided to, well, we came up with a timetable of addressing some of the upcoming expenses, and we'll tackle those at a later date. Public Works, we looked at Lake Shore Drive Water Improvement Project bid process and schedule. And we looked at fire truck financing. Mr. Wall asked me to take a role in finding some favorable financing for that purchase, if possible, which I will investigate. I looked at the Public Safety Building issues. We discussed getting a budget working groups so that 2023 can hopefully be a little smoother than 2022 was. We all agreed that when the election happens in November, everybody is up for election, including myself, and there very likely will be a whole new slate of people or a big majority of new people. And where our hope is to be able to hand that group a working plan as to how this place works and what they can do so that there's not too much interruption into the town's day-to-day operation. We looked at the civic contract. We're trying to move to the cloud with our software provider. And it's been a little more cumbersome than we thought. There's some pretty substantial firewalls that were placed by our previous software consultant on the town's software programs, which is great, but it's hard to move everything to the cloud because of that, so they're working through that. That was about it. We touched on a few other things, but I think that wraps it up for that meeting, so thank you.
Okay, Human Resources, Mary Lou.
We did not meet in the month of June?
Tree Board, Ellen Lynch.
She's on Zoom.
Ellen can't hear you.
We can't read your lips, Helen. Can you unmute yourself?
There we go.
Something look forward to. Anyway, we did not meet in June either, and back in May, I feel like we have to be to focus on the minor points of our conference. What is the meeting we're doing?
Yeah, you give me a...
When he has some questions, ask some of the, some of the things we're in.
Yeah, give me a call on that. We'll set a time up. I think I left a message on your phone earlier today, so.
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, Bill and Commission, they had two meetings, one on 5/12. There wasn't a whole lot of note that went on at that meeting. 6/9, they also had a meeting. There was discussion of the change in the structure for fines. That's gone to the APC, and then ultimately hopefully will come back to the Town Council. A beach, a letter to the residents who've been deemed to have built illegal beach stairs is ready to go out, and hopefully that will go out soon, and they will be aware of the infractions. The Building Department software is here. It's going to take 90 days to get up and running with that. The Captain's Walk property, that's the one over in Hidden Shores that takes up a whole peninsula. And the town's engineering firm is reviewing the NOI and SWPPEP forms. Those are forms from the MS4, which is the government agency that takes care of drainage from properties, particularly concerned about wetlands and things like that, particularly with Lake Claire over there. 1514 Lake Shore Drive, they had requested a site review plan. We had to deny one part of their request. They wanted to put, it's a house on the lake side of Lake Shore Drive. They wanted to put a garage on the other side of Lake Shore Drive. Our ordinances say that every lot has to have a primary residence. A garage doesn't count as a primary residence. And so they may have to go to the BZA if they really want to do that.
So we do have some grandfathered, because there are some along there.
There might be, but yeah, it doesn't affect, you know, new ones, but yeah. So anyway, that's where we're at with that, and that's the Building Commission. Border Zoning Appeals has not met since our last meeting. The Advisory Plan Commission, they met on 5/15 of 23. Amendment to the fines section of Sections 150, 151, 154, and 155 were discussed. It was decided that fines for building with no building permit and no contract or no contractor registration should apply to both the property owner and the contractor. The fines for building outside and the approved building permit applies to the homeowner only. Mr. Willoughby is going to make sure that the amendment clearly states that, and it was set for public hearing for the next Advisory Plan Commission, which will take place next month. And that was it at the APC. Building Permit and Revenue Report.
Building Permit and Revenue Report for May 2023, 36 permits totaling $1,286,194 with revenue of $13,879. Four electric permits issuing a total of $744. One street cut permit for $100 of revenue. Legal expenses paid in May, $6,312.50 to Braji Nelson and James. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then legal expenses?
Well, I said it. Legal expenses paid in May, $6,312.50 to Braji Nelson and James.
Okay, and then how about legal expenses for the Clerk Treasurer's Office? You promised us a report on that monthly.
Yes, I did, sir. We don't have legal expenses from Barnes and Thornburg for last month. Year-to-date, though, the legal expenses for Barnes and, well, the Clerk Treasurer budget for legal expenses is $5,000. Year-to-date, we spent $1,627.
Great. And then how about expenses from the Clerk Treasurer's Office for Sender and Company?
So Sender has taken a more active role than they were in the recent past because we had employee changes. But currently, year-to-date, 2023, we had $4,400 for Sender. And just to give a frame of reference, in 2022, we spent $19,722 with Sender. In 2021, we spent $17,036. So year over year, we're still lower than we were in previous years, but current year-to-date, to answer your question, is $4,400.
Great, thank you. Okay, unfinished business. So like to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023 dash, I'm not sure what the dash is.
That would be the Clerk's Office, I don't know either. That's supposed to, there's a number that...
Okay. And that, this is a ordinance to amend and restate the water rates and/or charges for use of the services rendered by the town of Long Beach Water Department, particularly with regard to vacant lots. Chris, can you kind of expound on exactly what's in that so everybody...
Clarify, because it's many more words than what is actually being done here. Working with Mary Lou and some discussion with the Public Works Board, the thought was discussing various changes and what should be applicable in these charges. So this, the main part of this ordinance was adopted in 2022 with the assistance of Sender, Sender's Office, and putting together the figures. The only material change in here is in Section 3D. Previously, the fire protection charge was only applicable to those that were customers that were using the system. And the proposed change is that that fire protection charge, which is through April 30th, 2026, is $2.60 a month. And then thereafter, beginning May 1st, 2026, $2.20. That is the main change, other than the effective date. This was prepared at the request of Public Works to make this change, set for public hearing as instructed, and I'll leave the rest to you.
Great. So what, as part of the Public Works, one of the things, just as an example, and I'm not going to give anybody's name, but if you live over by Hacienda where we have sewers and they have lots, if you had a tap, and I worked in the Water Department, that was the key thing, if you had a tap, then you paid all the charges that we put on the water bill, which are, most of them are town charges. And so Lynn is, you know, it is interesting. We had one guy that lives on Oriole Trail, and he called it the do-nothing charges. And I didn't disagree with him, so we looked into it. And so we didn't think that was fair. They're not using water. They're not, it's not being tapped into, you know, they're not, it's just that the tap was put there because that was like a new subdivision probably about 40 years ago. And what we wanted to do was treat everybody the same. So we needed an ordinance to justify the charges because we have people whose homes have burned down. No one lives there. They have not rebuilt, and they get all the charges even though they don't use water. So that's what we were looking for, to be fair and consistent. So that's how this all came about.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to people who want to speak in favor of this ordinance. Anybody on Zoom? I'll open the floor to people who want to speak against this ordinance. Anybody on Zoom? I'll close them. Go ahead. Yep.
Oh, Mary.
Yeah, come up here.
Come up here. Yeah. You can do it, Mary.
Mary O'Neill, 1532 Lake Shore Drive. I guess my question is, in looking at, it says with regards to the vacant lots. So if there's no tap on the lot, there's no fee, it's just if there's a water tap there or if there's just any...
That was the old rule. When I was in there and that, and I picked up when Barb retired, and then we no longer had a Water Department person. That was the justification that Greg had told me about. So Lynn is a very intuitive person, and I mean that in a very complimentary way. And she's like, well, how do you, how do you justify this? And I'm like, oh, I don't know. That's just the way we've done it. So that's what we did. And at the time, there were probably, we talked about, there were nine people that had taps. And that's how we were charging.
Right, but if there's a vacant lot with nothing, no services, no taps, no nothing, they will not be charged.
Just fire protection.
But they, there's nothing there, other than...
Going to protect that property from burning down.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so anybody else want to speak either for or against?
Maybe we need a microphone in the back.
Good for a brief clarification. Bob Rule, 2901 Lake Shore Drive. Just a question. We were just talking about like a vacant lot that has water service to it. But if I understand it correctly, even if you don't use the water, you still get charged. Is that correctly?
That was the case. That was the case.
You don't get charged for the use of the water.
Okay, so then when it's fixed, then what happens?
All you're going to pay is for fire protection.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
Two fifty a month for a certain date, and then thereafter, it's two twenty a month.
Okay, and I, maybe this isn't the smartest question, but fire protection. I've got 100 feet of beachfront property, and there's nothing on there but sand. What's going to burn?
That sand could turn to glass.
Okay, okay.
That fire protection, that fire protection fee is not related to the Fire Department. It's essentially another chunk of revenue that the Water Department uses for maintaining hydrants and things like that. It's really not fire protection per se.
And that's trying to make an issue out of it.
A bit of a misnomer.
First of all, I mean, hands down, we've got the best Fire Department in the state, in my opinion. And I, you know, do nothing, go against their grain, so.
Great. Okay, anybody else want to...
Hi, I'm Nikki Chalek, 1412 Lake Shore Drive. Myself and two neighbors own the two lots across the street from us, so there's three of us owning two lots. I hope, and I called the Water Department lady, and she had no idea. But I hope we're going to do something economic, so we're not getting a bill, because right now I get no bills, for $2.60 a month times two. I don't know how you want, and the lady didn't know how to do it either. But it seems ridiculous on both parties to send us a bill for $5.20 a month.
Yeah, I suppose that could be added to the bill you already get for your primary residence.
Well, once again, mine's shared, so I mean, I...
But you do get a monthly water bill?
Well, I get a monthly water bill for my house.
Yeah, so we could add it to that.
I'm sure they can.
Well, I doubt the three of us want to do that.
I'll find out.
Okay. I mean, maybe you do it as a month, as an annual or semi-annual bill, something more...
Well, honestly, it's all brand-new, but you know, we do try to look into things, and we will help you.
Okay, okay. Just make it...
So what was your address?
My address is 1412. The lots are, the lots don't have an address.
They will. We're working.
Yeah. But I'm sure I'm not the only one that has shared lots, so it's not just...
Well, you know what? It's all new. That's one of the reasons Lynn is working on all of this, and she's very detailed. And I'm, and you'll, we will...
I talked, no, I talked to Diane. Diane's new, but she's very good, too. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to make a comment either for or against? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then we can vote on this, right? All right, given the fact that we've had the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to approve public ordinance 2023, whatever number Tim wants to give it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, a related issue, this also relates to vacant lots. And this is basically just for discussion because we don't have an ordinance. But Chapter 96 of our ordinances talks about charges for leaf pickup. And it, right now, doesn't charge vacant lots for leaf pickup. I guess my thought is, is most vacant lots are producing leaves that blow onto all of our properties. We rake them to the side of the road, and they have to get picked up. I would like, I would suggest that we have Chris amend Chapter 96 to allow charges, just like everybody else pays for leaf pickup for vacant lots. Thoughts from the Commissioner or from the Council?
Would we have to have a public meeting for that?
Well, yeah, we'll have to. This is basically just ask Chris to come up with something, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
What constitutes a vacant lot?
A lot with no...
Structure.
Structure on it.
No structure, owned by somebody?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah. So, does that sound okay with everybody?
Yeah, I think we ought to do a little homework on it. Yeah, we've talked about it a little bit. I think it's a valid point.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to ask Chris to come up with an amendment to Chapter 96. Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Stop 29 project, invoice from Woodruff &amp; Sons. John, I think you're...
So I had the opportunity to meet with the representative for the four property owners. I think there are three still standing, but there were four property owners originally in the, in the situation down there at Stop 29. We met yesterday and discussed, as I've told the Council on a number of occasions, we were trying to negotiate this number as best we could. There were funds in the gold bond for shore protection. Originally approximately a million-dollar worth of bond that we, that the town took out, and we spent some money on shore protection. The understanding back when we started negotiating with these property owners was that we had about $800,000 worth of improvements, rather shore protection improvements. And we would have a couple hundred thousand left over out of that million, take away the finance costs. What I've been told by the Clerk's Office recently that we do not have that much money left. But in this negotiation, we are trying to do more than one thing with this negotiation. We're trying to get rid of the old lawsuits against the town and a bunch of individuals relating to the historical record about the way the shore protection issues interfaced with their building permits. There's a lot of history there. So my point in bringing this up this evening is, right now, I tried to negotiate that down, as I've been telling this Council for a long while now. We're in the neighborhood of $80,000 to settle this up. There's quite a bit of improvements that were done specifically. There's quite a bit of improvements that were done specifically for the town at Stop Twenty-Nine over and above the scope of the original work that was done for the private property owners. We did negotiate with them and allow them to access the beach through the town property. So that was part of what we contributed. And we did not take out the ramp such that we can use that ramp later on if we chose, so choose. So the town has a ramp for access. So right now, we have to decide if we're okay with settling this out at eighty thousand dollars. That's essentially what it amounts to.
Do we have the bill from Woodruff yet?
No, I wanted to find out from the council what the temperature was on that figure before I asked for an invoice from them. They can get it for us in very short order. So they have, essentially, Mary Lou, they have invoiced the homeowners, the property owners down there. And this is the meeting that we, that occurred yesterday.
So what, did they invoice the property owners? How much?
Whatever their private property, well, whatever the contract was for what they did. Fire exceeds what we're talking about, but whatever it was, that's their private contract. I'm not privy to that.
Is this the bill, though, that we've been waiting for for about five months? And first Mark talks to him, and then you talk to him from Woodruff, and then we don't, we can't find out what it is, the amount we owe?
Well, the amount we owe right now, if we approve it, is eighty thousand. But we have been chasing this invoice for far longer than five months. But they have invoiced the homeowners, the property owners. Whatever they invoice them, the home, the property owners, the expectations is that to settle this whole thing, get rid of the lawsuits, and get, be completely done with this situation is eighty thousand dollars.
Do we have an invoice from Woodruff for eighty thousand dollars is what I want to know.
I think I just addressed that, John, but I'll revisit it for you. What we'd like to do tonight is get the temperature of the council for that amount of money, which we've been, I've been telling you for almost a couple of years now, that we were somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars. The invoice from Woodruff, I didn't want him to generate an invoice if we're going to go back and get into another legal wrang down there at Stop Twenty-Nine over dollars. If we choose to settle at the eighty thousand dollars, we'll get an invoice to pay. But if you guys tell me that we're not going to settle for eighty, and we have to go back to court with these people, then that's what I'll tell them. So that's what.
Well, do the property owners, is their invoice contingent upon our invoice? I mean, how's this all working?
Well, if we don't pay the invoice for our eighty thousand, then that's, then it's up to the property owners what they decide to do. It's a negotiation. We negotiated this number.
So, John, this invoice is for the total amount of work done by Stop Twenty-Nine? Or just the work done on town property?
Yes.
Which is it?
And so we.
Which is it, meaning what, Mary?
Town property?
Yes, the work that was done on the town property.
Okay. And so the bottom line is?
The original hope was that they were going to pick up the tab for the whole thing. But the negotiations over time, again, I was told that we had some extra money. We didn't know exactly what the invoices were going to be until that all came through on our own shore protection work at Stop Twenty-One and Stop Twenty-Three. I was, I was on the impression we had a couple hundred thousand, as I think we all were, that we were going to come in at about eight hundred. We came in a little over eight hundred thousand. And then Tim's office has informed me that we only had twenty thousand dollars. But I, as I looked at what they have provided me with information, and again, I don't know the accuracy of it, but there's another twenty-seven or so thousand that was taken out of that GO bond account. Trista with Sender tells me that we can't take money out of that GO bond account to pay for other things. So we still need to do some investigation about what that twenty-seven thousand dollars that was pulled out of the GO bond funds went toward. But that would significantly help us.
Yeah, I did, I did order a, I mean, like we said at budget and finance, I don't think I mentioned that we reviewed this at length. But the numbers are, you know, they don't lie. And, and there is a accounting to those numbers currently. But just to be safe, I've asked Sender Dalton, our municipal advisor's accountants, to review these numbers again and make sure that we're accurate with our reporting to the town council. So we, we hope to have that, I'd say by the end of the week or early next week at the latest. But, you know, we certainly don't want to have a situation where any of the GO bond money was used for a purpose that it was not intended to be used for. And we'll substantiate exactly what and where that money went and how much is left.
So, John, are these the three people that, that sued probably eight years ago?
Yeah, essentially, this is involved. So there's lots of history. The first thing that happened, and this goes like two administrations ago, was that these people applied for building permits for some shore protection work of their own. There was a big bruhah with the town.
Actually, I was on the BZA, and we approved it. And then when the new group came in, they disapproved it, so.
Well, again, Mary Lou, there's quite a bit of history, so. I mean, I don't know that.
So I know the three people, but I would like to wait. I'd like to do a little, we, we waited this long for Woodruff. I think we should look at this and see.
Why didn't Woodruff just give us a bill for eighty thousand, and we'll pay it?
That's what I'd like to do. I don't know what, I'm not sure what you want to investigate, Mary Lou. I'm confused.
Well, I'd like to see a bill. I mean, I don't want to pay eighty thousand, and then they say, well, it's really a hundred and ten thousand. And, you know, that's how this game works I've seen in the last year or so.
Well, if you.
One amount, and the next thing you know, it's twice that amount.
Okay. So we can keep talking about this for ad nauseam. But if, what I would ask for, I would make a motion that we say that we're willing to negotiate, we're willing to compromise that eighty thousand dollar expenditure on the part of the town for the town's portion of the project, and that we will get an invoice from Woodruff to pay that eighty thousand.
Yeah, if the invoice is over eighty thousand, we still just pay eighty thousand, correct?
There is no invoice over eighty thousand. What I'm trying to tell you is we negotiated that to eighty thousand.
Right.
I've been telling you for almost a couple of years now that it was going to be between eighty and a hundred.
So if we pay eighty thousand, this whole thing goes away? We can take it off the agenda?
That's exactly right.
It'd be nice to have a bill, though, before we authorize money.
John, I've told you twice, I'll tell you the third.
Tell me a third time.
If you want to see an invoice from Woodruff, then let's tell me. I'm not going to have them generate an invoice we're not going to pay. Well, we're going to, if we, if we're going to, if we, if you, you know, if you are of a mind to negotiate, to pay this negotiated amount, then we'll get the invoice from them.
I would like to see the invoice before we pay.
Well, that's obvious. We're not going to pay anything until we get an invoice. What, I've made a motion. Can somebody second it?
So the motion is repeated again?
My motion is that the town council is in, is in agreement that we would settle for this eighty thousand dollars, and we will pay, if we get this, we'll get the invoice for eighty thousand. We'll pay the invoice for eighty thousand, and the whole situation goes away.
All right, I'll second that for a vote. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
So who's all opposed? One?
Two. I'm opposed.
So you're all opposed? Okay.
Okay.
What that means, then, is I go back to those homeowners, and we go back to court.
No, what it means is you'd have Woodruff give us a bill, and we'll pay it. If it's eighty thousand or less, we'll pay it. What's so hard about?
Would you make a motion that you can approve, John? Because you didn't approve mine, so you, would you make a motion to that effect so we can get this done?
I move that upon receipt of an invoice from Woodruff for the amount of eighty thousand or less, that we authorize payment.
I second that motion.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Horizon Bank, interest update.
Okay. Horizon Bank has been our bank for a long time, and we've had, had all the town's money sitting in low-paying interest generating accounts. And I negotiated, my office negotiated with them last month to give us a higher rate for our checking account and funds. And to, well, and we worked out a situation where we could move some of our funds into a CD. So it was, it resulted in a net gain in interest income to the town for last month of three thousand seven hundred and two dollars. We renewed the thirty-day CD again for June. So we'll, we'll achieve that same amount via the CD. The checking account interest rates do fluctuate, but we should also benefit from increased higher rates for that checking account. And there are more opportunities to get more interest for the money that we have. But this was kind of a quick band-aid.
How much do we have exactly invested now?
We have five hundred thousand dollars in a CD that yields four point seven five percent.
But we have more money than that laying around.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, can't we get at least a six-month or a year?
Well, yeah, yeah.
I mean, because we could get, I think, at this point, about four point six, almost five. And in about another two or three months, the rates are going to go back down. And so we're not going to be able to get that higher rate.
So we definitely can do that, John. And the hesitancy that we had within my office was that we have some pretty substantial expenses looming, and we didn't want to tie up the town's money in case we have to utilize it to pay some of these things. So the checking account is paying over three and a half percent. So we figured that was a pretty good yield for checking account money that would be, you know, available. But we certainly can look at putting more money into CDs.
Yeah, I'm not saying putting it all in, but if you layer it right, it'll always have some come and do, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get a proposal from Horizon, and I'll bring to budget and finance. But again, I did, I didn't want to be the guy saying we can't pay the bill because I put too much money in the CD. But I will, I will.
If we wait too long, the rates will start coming down again, so.
I know.
Grab it while you can.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Okay. Civic upgrades to the cloud?
It's way harder than we thought. They, Civic said it would take fifteen minutes per workstation, and we are on our second week of attempting to get this thing moved over between K Plus and Civic and the firewalls that were put into place by the previous software group before K Plus. K Plus now is trying to get our firewalls off, even though they didn't put them in place, so that Civic can move to the cloud. They were able to move a workstation at Sender Dalton to the cloud so our municipal advisor accountant can access Civic for the town's information via, from their office, which is a big time saver. But as far as our workstations, we're still operating as we always have. The, the data has not moved to the cloud yet. And I'm told by Civic, although the one person working on the project won on vacation and has gone this week, but I'm told that it should be done next week.
What platform are you working on right now?
What platform? It's called Civic Systems. It's an accounting platform that, yeah, yeah. And it's not very intuitive. I don't love it, frankly, but I don't have a whole lot of experience with municipal accounting programs to be able to judge it by. But it's, it's a big company. No, I know, I know. But getting it all to the cloud past our firewall is a little bit of a challenge, but we're working on it.
Okay. Haas Engineering, private Lake Shore Drive, sewers update. My understanding is we're still waiting for a report from Haas as to exactly what they want to do or what they're going to have to do to Lake Shore Drive and Chassleton to do this. One thought I have is, we initially talked about them repaving all of it, but that's probably a bit extreme. One thought I have is that what we could maybe do is ask Tom Dolph. Once we get a plan from them as to what they intend to do in terms of patching on Chassleton and Lake Shore Drive, and say, Tom, you know what? I understand that this being patched isn't going to last as long as it would if it hadn't been patched. What's it going to cost the town to do it early? And then we could ask the people who want the private sewer to give the town that much money so that when we have to redo it, we have that much ahead of the game. Does that sound reasonable to you guys as far as the approach to take with those folks? I don't think this sewer should cost anybody else in the town. And if we, if we allow them to just tear up this road and don't get compensated for it, it will. Does that sound okay? And I think that maybe should be our position?
Yes.
Okay. And again, we're waiting for that report. And exactly, I saw a guy out there with a flag today.
One other thing, what they were doing with all the flags or whether the utility locates something down Chassleton and Lake Shore Drive was they were trying to optimize the location for these stations. I won't call them lift stations because that's not what they are, but they're junction chambers, sorts of things. They were trying to get them off the side of the road and limit the amount of damage to the pavement. But I don't think they were able to do that because of, because of weather conditions and all. So once they get that information, we have some other issues relative to that project in terms of maintenance bonds and some other things. We're going to need some help from Chris revolving around the ultimate agreement between that group of people and the town.
Yes. Yeah, we have to make sure that the town is not left holding the bag for this project at any point in the future particularly. Firetruck financing plan. Do we have something on that or?
I was asked last week to look into it, and, and I've made a few calls to some folks that I know that are in that business, but I haven't assembled a plan or a proposal from any of them. I did read, I mentioned it, budget and finance. There was an article in the local paper, the Daily.
Herald Dispatch.
Thank you. And Laporte bought a new firetruck recently, and they got great financing terms. And I wanted to see if we couldn't mirror that. So I, I've got some calls to the Laporte people, but nothing back yet. But I will hopefully have information soon.
Okay. Inter-local agreement between Long Beach and Laporte County regarding electrical inspections. Do we have that agreement?
Don't have the form of agreement. It's really just you approving. And really, that's probably a building commission decision, but it's just time to renew. It is expired. And again, they were hired in lieu of having an electrical inspector retain on behalf of the town. So I believe Chief Swistec is the one who initiated and reviewed that contract. And so it's just simply a matter of having the county send over an update and getting it approved by the building commission.
Okay. So go to the building commission. All right, we can take that off the agenda then. Next agenda, Letter to Spirit Airlines. This, there was some confusion initially. It was thought that the agreement that we signed between the town council and the Bartletts included a letter to Spirit Airlines. Turns out that wasn't part of the agreement. So given the fact that it wasn't part of the agreement, I don't think we need to either write or read a letter at this meeting.
Good.
Good. New business. Higden Family, July fourth, five K run.
I make a motion to approve it. And if you think about it, every year, they make a donation back to the town. The chairs that we sit in over there that were donated, they've done several different things every year. And I don't know how many years they've been doing that. I would say maybe twenty or more.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Glendale Way, July twenty-second, party, street closure request.
The, the town's been contacted by the residents at twenty-five twenty-two Glendale Way. They have requested to host a block party on July twenty-second, beginning at six P M. to ten P M., where they'll have the roadway blocked off with barricades. They have sent a letter to the surrounding affected neighbors, informing them and also inviting them. To date, there has been no objections, and the police department has no objections and would recommend the approval of the request.
I make that motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Silver Tip Block Party, street closure request.
The residents at twenty oh six Idlewood have contacted the town and have asked for a street closure on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from five P M. to eleven P M.
This will be a neighborhood celebration. They will be closing off Silver Tip in between Idlewood and Somerset. This area is not heavily traveled. The police department has no objections. All the affected neighbors would be contacted and driveways would remain accessible. And we would recommend that the town approve the request.
I make that motion.
Second.
And did they invite all their neighbors too?
They have, and there's no objections to date.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Water Tower Stairs Proposal.
As the council is aware, earlier this year, we had placed a retaining wall at the water tower here on Foxdale. We now would like to allow the water department to place stairs for the contractors and the town's employees to access the hill leading up to the water tower. The same contractor, Jacob Filotovich Construction, has proposed to complete the work for $10,800. The materials that would be used for the stair system would be masonry and would match the current retaining wall. The water department has informed me that they have the remaining funds in their 2023 operating budget. Therefore, there is no request for an additional appropriation. We would recommend that the council allow the improvement to the water tower hill.
I make that motion.
Second.
Give it to him.
Okay.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, that, are we going to fence that eventually so people can't get to the water tower?
There's discussions of possibly fencing the legs that lead up to it, but not the entire perimeter of the water tower.
Okay.
That may be next year's project because operating funds are starting to get low this year.
Okay.
Clerk Treasurer's Office, part-time hire, Laurel Kozinski.
So Laurel worked for the town a couple of years ago. She's familiar with our software and is well-liked within my department. And she would come on for probably less than, certainly less than 20 hours a week, but probably closer to 15 to 10. At a, at one of the, at a rate that would be in line with some of our newer individuals. Currently, our labor in my group is year-to-date $33,906. And that is of a, of a $95,000 budget for the year. So we are slightly under budget right now. And we did have an employee leave, so there is a void in the responsibilities that she used to carry. And there's some extra room in our payroll for a new individual who will, again, probably most likely work less than the individual who left. So we are hoping that the town council will approve my office to hire Laurel.
I, I know Laurel personally. She and I came in when we lost the person in the water department. She has the accounting background. She's very thorough. So I make that motion that we hire her.
Second.
So is, is the anticipation then that with her working the 15 to 20 hours a week, that your department will still be within budget at the end of the year?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, barring any, you know, craziness, but yes. And that, and also getting, getting Laurel added on will reduce our dependence on sender, which is a heck of a lot more expensive than what we will pay Laurel. So.
Laurel sits on the budget and finance. She has an accounting background. She's more detailed than a lot of people I know.
Yeah. And I think if we don't get Laurel, we, we run the risk of being over budget versus if we get Laurel.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Cell Tower Lease Buyout Proposal from Tower Point.
Little bit of history. Recently, in the last two months, Tower Point has contacted the town in reference to our current easement lease that we have on town property directly across from Hacienda Restaurant. So if you're not familiar, the town has our public works facility directly across the street from Hacienda, which is also our water department and street department garage. On that property, there is a cell tower. That particular cell tower is currently under lease where we generate on a monthly income of $931.70 for an annual income of $11,000, I'm sorry, $11,180.40. So Tower Point has sent a proposal to the town. They would like to buy out the current lease agreement that we have with our current leasing. And their proposal is for a lease that would be for no greater than 98 years, I believe, which the total purchase price would be that the town would receive payment, a one-time lump sum of $170,000. Now, if we take the annual income that we're receiving currently into the 170,000, that would mean for the next 15 years rent, we would receive all at one time. After year 15, we would no longer be making income on the rent of that particular telecommunications tower. I've asked that the council review the contract. No decision needs to be made tonight. However, I did reach back out to Tower Point. I asked if this was negotiable at all. They said they have a little bit of room. I originally asked for 200,000 and they said that that would probably not be reached. However, they could possibly increase the 170,000 if we decided to take payments up to five years in payments. So again, this was not an idea of the town. The town was approached by Tower Point. So therefore, the council needs to make a decision, if not tonight, in the near future, so that we can reach back out to Tower Point with a decision.
Would we own the land?
We would continue to own the land. They would only have an easement lease on the tower itself. Therefore, if they decided to bring on another telecommunications company, another cellphone company, they would have the right to do so. One of the things that they had stressed during my conversation with them is that there's no guarantee that 15 years down the road, that cellphone towers will still be necessary. So therefore, the town would be at risk if we, you know, 15 years from now, the tower goes away, we would have no income. But obviously, we would have the $170,000 lump sum payment upfront. And obviously, there would be no restrictions on that $170,000. It would be for the town to use at its will. And I can answer any questions or I can reach back out to Tower Point if anybody has any follow-up.
This sounds a little reminiscent of the Chicago. City of Chicago selling their parking meters to a group of investors.
Billion dollars.
About 20 years ago, and I believe the investors have recouped all the money that was sent. In fact, 500,000 more, 500 million, it's millions.
500 million more.
And meanwhile, their lease goes for another 60 years.
60 some years. So it wasn't a very good deal for Chicago.
Same, same as the Skyway.
Yeah, Skyway, same thing.
So I have a question. I, I have a very little bit of experience in leasing cell tower things. I've got some real estate. If, if we were to sell this tower to these guys, would this prevent us from ever doing another cell tower or for, from leasing space on our water tower for somebody who wanted to put something up there? I mean, just hypothetically, I'm not saying we're putting stuff on the water tower, so don't kill me, but if.
I can answer the water tower question. And speaking to the water superintendent, we've asked to put police communications antennas on the tower in the past. They have shied away from that. We recently put a magnetic one up there because they did not want something that was fabricated and welded to the tower. And that was for the fire department's paging system, for the countywide paging system. But I do know that we cannot put anything on top of the water tower, so that would not be an option. I know on, I don't think this would restrict us on any other land that's owned by the town to put up a new tower. But at this particular site currently where there is one tower, one leasing, bringing in the $11,000 a year. And I did speak to the former clerk treasurer who has informed me that this is not the first time the town has been approached by other vendors asking to buy out the tower lease. So once again, we're being approached as we have been in the past.
And Mark, when does our present lease end?
That is a good question, and I will have to get that answer for you because I am not certain on that. I know it was, I want to say it's in the next 10 years, but I'm not certain.
And I think there was something about a 10% increase in the payments that we would get on that, but I'm not sure. Was that annual?
Yes, there is. We, we currently get a slight increase. As with the proposal from Tower Point, you know, they're also offering to pay all the closing costs, other title costs, stuff like that. But I, I'll get that answer with the original contract.
Yeah. So I would suggest we, we maybe table this until we have all the information. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Holiday Construction Group, revised invoice number three for approval, $346,777.72.
So Chris is informing, as has Sender, that the council has to approve expenditures, even though they're just contractual expenditures, not extras. But this is the third invoice from Holiday. We've paid two already. This is their third invoice. And I'd make a motion that we approve it for payment.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Yeah, we got approval yet to build this building?
From who, John?
From this county and state health departments.
Well, we, we received, you talking about septic permit or when you say approval to build the building? We, we have a building.
Well, you can't build a building without the septic approval. So we've been talking about this for six months. I still haven't seen the approval.
Well, we had, we had an approved septic permit until a bunch of individuals contacted the state health department and the county health department and muddied up the water. So we've, we've had to reapply. We've been told that it was on hold, not denied.
Where are we on that process is the only thing.
We submitted another email on Monday to David Muntz, who's the state department of health representative for the septic situation. On about a week and a half ago, I'm sorry, we submitted some additional information that he requested about two weeks ago. And asked him for some additional information on Monday. We have not received a reply yet. We had a meeting with the Laporte County Health Department Representative Amanda Lainer and discussed the situation with her. She assured us at that meeting that there was going to be something agreed upon. It would either be a pump and haul potentially in the worst case or some variation of what we're currently doing, which is having our field over there across the way, as you know, with a septic tank.
What I'm concerned with is when this proposal was sent to the council last December, and I think you're out there, we're at that meeting. And we were told how this building, what was all going to be supplied with the building, with the lease for the police, conference room, showers for the firemen, all these things. That's what was approved at that meeting. It seemed like they're going to downsize the number of people that can go into this building. And so that's my concern. Is this going to be different than what we agreed to last December? Is it going to be downsized or what?
Can I clarify?
Go ahead.
Yep. So just for the council's.
What's that?
Make sure you speak.
So for the council's consideration, I've had some discussions outside of a meeting that we had with county official resubmission of, to clarify that there wasn't anything that wasn't included in terms of the initial submission, but there was a request for additional information. You know, Mr. Coker, Mr. Wall are aware that a new or updated application was submitted. During the meeting, there was discussion about capacity for the building. And so to Mr. Coker's point, community center, right, a public safety building where is available. So there was a request for information because there is a total capacity that is included in the plans. However, that number goes to figuring the number, ingress, egress purposes. However, the county and the state will take into consideration the number of people and what that capacity is and doing the calculations for approving that application. So nothing has been, as far as I'm aware in the information that I have in the discussions, because there was a follow-up with my office, was what is this building going to be used for? So there was never an intention as submitted, but potentially could be used at full capacity every day. But the discussion was, and their request was the clarification of what is day-to-day use. For instance, tonight's meeting isn't the norm. If this meeting were to happen, generally had, has been moved to the community center, it could be moved there. So that's a meeting that could happen once or twice a month. The firefighters, whatever their roster, between 25 and 50, let's say, that happens. They could have their training. The police department could be in there. So all of those things were clarified for their consideration. So then let's move forward to what that does. What they're going to do now is consider that application. All of that information has been clarified and provided that there is an intention that, you know, I, the, the council could decide you want to run out some space, right? And have a bridal shower, a baby shower in there. So there will be some public use of that building. What was asked for is clarification. That was given. And so now the county, the state and the county are in the process of figuring out whether that submission is going to be approved or not. If it is not, so upside and positive for the, the town is it gets approved and you move forward without incident. The building commission has put a halt on the building permit in that it's just simply moving forward is subject to getting approval, a septic permit from the county, which is standard, and that's how the building commission is generally operated. If that application gets denied, then the process will be that, that the town will have to submit a plan for septic system. That may be an expansion of the drain, whatever is required. They're going to get a soil scientist and the state has to. The state will respond within 30 days of whether that's approved or not. And whatever, regardless of what that timing is after that, then the town would apply for a pump and haul permit if there had to be work done. So as I see it, there is nothing that is going to stop the ability to address the septic system. It's just a matter of whether it's going to be direct and you get that septic permit or whether it's going to be denied and there has to be another tank, another, a new septic system, an expansion of it. So those are all possibilities. But if it were denied and the, the town submits, then the plan for whatever the county, the state and the county wants, a pump and haul permit is going to be granted if you apply for it after you have your permit, because there isn't occupancy. And as I understand it, and then here I'll defer to the rest, is that that building is not to be occupied for approximately a year anyway. The longest that that pump and haul would be valid is a year as well. So that's, that's the full picture as I understand it for your consideration and discussion. And like I said, if it gets denied, it perhaps delays the beginning of construction. But some of that stuff needs to be done and clearing asphalt and those kinds of things anyway, in case the new system has to be implemented.
All right. So I'd make a motion to pay the invoice.
Oh, I have another consideration if I could just address it, Mr. President. As of the last fire commission, we have yet to complete drawings on the building, which correlates to total costs. And so I would also say there's a consider, second consideration here in addition to the septic tank issue that should, we should suspend payments until both of those issues are resolved.
What do you specify? I'm confused about your question, Mike. You're talking about drawings in what regard?
The drawings for the building have not, were, at the last fire commission, were at the 90% completion. That was based on your comments. And with that, I believe, and then correct me if I'm wrong, that will then finalize the construction cost figures. Now, if that's not the case, and we're still at 2.5 or less million dollars in the construction costs, regardless of the percentage of the drawings, then I'm fine with that. But that's, that's just, in my mind, that's just an outstanding issue.
Well, as I mentioned at the fire commission meeting, we're, the intent is to have the final construction costs within a few weeks, within a couple of weeks of the date that we're sitting here tonight. What I'd like to do, we're going to present, we're having a meeting with the building corporation people on, I believe Tuesday next week or Monday, Monday this coming week, to talk about that very thing, present it to them, give them the information, have their, get their informator on it and then meet with the fire commission hopefully next week.
So my point is we don't have final construction costs.
Well, we have final construction costs, but we don't know what we're going to approve, what the town council will approve. So the 10% that's left on the drawings is only 10% because the council hasn't had a chance to weigh in on the additional costs.
Is, is, is the projected cost still at 2.5 million?
No.
What is it at?
We don't know yet until we get that information.
And I think that's another reason to suspend the payments on this.
What?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you because the crowd's getting a little rambunctious here. What were you saying?
I said that's a second reason in addition to the septic's that we should spend payments until we know the answer to that question.
Okay. Suspending payments, I don't understand the relationship between suspending payments on a contractual obligation with the information.
I'm not saying that we're never going to pay our construction company. I'm saying in order for us to approve this, and one of the reasons we're doing this is we're approving every advance towards this contract and payments. We have currently paid, we've currently paid $147,000 and change. We now have a, an invoice for $346,000. So we're now close to half a million dollars or more into this project. And I, we, and I have not seen, I personally have not seen it. I don't think anybody in the town council has seen the final construction costs. I don't believe.
No, that's a fair statement.
Dr. Lemay, can I, can I add? Just for clarification, I, I do caution you. And this is something that we've discussed for a very long time about the danger of having this parallel process. And going forward, but everybody has moved forward. Those votes have been in the affirmative to move forward despite plans not. So some of it is catching up now because of some of the uncertainties. I do caution you that the contractual obligations are not related to the concerns about where we are. And some of that is because of, again, approaching it in that parallel way, not having things finalized, not having septic system finalized, not having plans finalized. With that said, I also don't know what the timing is in terms of when the invoices are actually due. Because we may be having some discussion that is not necessarily, and you could have a special meeting. And so I don't know the timing of the turnaround. I haven't seen that invoice. So that's number one. And number two, you might want to consider, and not that I want to put any brakes on anything, but if, if there's work done to date and you have a contractual obligation to pay, you may want to consider that you halt and communicate with Halliday that they're not to do any additional work to get the town. But the contract is the contract at this point. And again, I just wanted, you get to do, you're the decision makers. My job is to help you make an informed decision. So some of those, some of it may be solved. Mr. Johnstone's question, for instance, those, that those final plans are here in the next couple of weeks and a special meeting could be had and we can revisit these invoices. Maybe all of that takes care of itself. But Mr. Wall, you may know better than I. I don't know when the invoices are actually due. They've been submitted here.
Right. What, it's typically a 30-day cycle. So when we receive an invoice early in the month, it's due at the end of the month.
What, what is this invoice for, John?
You just have to read the invoice, John. It's got all kinds of things on it.
Well, is it for material?
Part of it is.
Some of it is.
Self, that's correct. Yeah.
And so if we pay the invoice, are they going to drop off this material in our parking lot or what have they got to do with it? lot or what have they got to do with it?
Part of, part of the discussion relative to what I'd like to discuss this evening in addition to just this invoice payment, I was going to wait for a little later in the meeting, but we could certainly talk about it now. The building is scheduled to be, to be delivered the last week in June. So ideally, if we had our dreaders and everybody was in agreement, we would start site demolition coming up the week of the 19th, so that we could have the site stripped of asphalt. So when the building shows up, they can just move things around and dig their foundations and be ready to go. So that's the ideal schedule in terms of what, what's going to happen in the next few weeks.
We'd do this even if, hopefully we have an answer, but what if we don't have an answer about the septic by then?
Well, I think as Chris has shared and what, what I was trying to share earlier, the septic system issue is relatively benign. We're either going to be able to do something that we'd like to do, which we originally proposed, which is tie on to the existing system, or we're going to, or they're going to tell us that we need to do some modifications to the existing system, or they're going to tell us, look, you need to do something altogether different, which would mean potentially another septic tank. Some of the things we discussed with the Lepore County Health Department, which is the ultimate authority after the state passes it, was that potentially we could put another septic tank in such that there'd be two septic tanks and continue to use that drain field. So we're hoping to get this permission from these people to do one of those options. So it's not that it's not going to happen, it's just a question of which variation on the theme is it going to be on the septic issue. So in terms of the reasoning behind the schedule that I'm discussing with you is when we started this process, we were trying to keep the cost manageable. So the way we did that was we agreed all together, all of us, all these votes were unanimous, that we were going to have this dual, what Chris is referring to as a dual tracks situation, meaning let's not pass up the opportunity with all the supply chain issues and everything else that went on over the last couple of years. Let's not pass up the opportunity because we're all in agreement, we want to do this project. Let's get it going. Let's get the building ordered so that we don't have cost increases to deal with and similar things like the HVAC, for instance. They went out and bought an HVAC unit on the market because we told them we were going to do this project, we signed the contract. So they went out and bought a unit so that they could capture that with a less expensive unit rather than wait until the cost jumped up. Part of that whole discussion and all this that we've had back and forth was this scheduling issue. You, you put in for a building on their schedule with the building people, you do the final engineering, which we've done, and then you order the building. So that was, that was all done under the auspices of all of our approvals, the council approval to move forward on the project. So I guess you have to think in terms of what's the best option for the town. Like for instance, if we, if we tell them now that we don't want that building, the dunnage, the, the cost to the town is about $3,000 a week to hold it on a truck, if that's what we decide to tell them. If we don't want to pay this invoice and we don't want this project to continue to move forward. So there are costs, what I'm trying to get across to you is there are costs involved in not keeping it on schedule the way we chose. There are also some adjuncts to that discussion. We've, we've, what we're going to try to do is knock down the old fire department. I think I've shared this with you before, right after Labor Day, so that they can get the new parking lot, the town's new parking lot, built with the asphalt guys before their season closes. So if we keep pushing these things, we don't have those options available anymore and then the costs go up. So again, we've tried to chase this thing, we've tried to capitalize the costs and, and get them, you know, keep them as low as we can. So that's part of the motivation behind this schedule that we're talking.
Hey, Chris, what, what, where are we on the easement rights with the country club? If we have to go additional septic?
The, well, it's just the license. That has in principle been agreed to. There was just an insurance question. They came back with some requests with regard to indemnification language, but in terms of the usage, nothing has changed with that.
Would we have to get additional ground from, if we had to put in a whole new field?
Well, the answer that, based on today is no, because of the, the land that's out there, it's pretty expansive in general. And one of the general purposes that is allowed is maintain, repair, replace the septic system. So that shouldn't be an issue at all. It's, it's more so the capacity and the size and how much has to be done, but it won't affect the agreement that we have in place. Like I said, that's just subject to their final approval with the additions. And Chief Swistec got some information with regard to the, the insurance limits and those things.
John, I can add a little bit more to the septic field question. So a little over a year ago, when we had to unfortunately put in the septic field across the street when the previous one had failed, when I met with the septic contractor and with the Lepore County officials, the current area where our Presby system is to the east of the current system, there's additional land there that we could expand if need be. The reason that it's in the current location is because we didn't want to remove some of the ornamental trees that were in that area and that. So to answer the question, yes, there is additional land that if by chance we had to expand, divert into maybe two additional runs, there's plenty of land to do that in the area we're already operating out of.
So I want to add something. We were all in agreement that yes, we need a building, we need something better. But I have, as a person that would be building a house, I certainly wouldn't be allowed to build if I didn't have a building permit and a septic permit. And we all know that costs of everything are going to go up, but that's like the guns to our head. And about three months ago, John, you forced us to pay a $50,000 bill saying it was for work done, which we said, okay, if it was for work done, that's fair. And when the bill came in itemized, it was not. 23,000 of that was for work done and 27 was you signed a contract with them. So that misled five of us.
I beg to differ, Mary Lou. Would you be more specific about what you're trying to accomplish here? The invoice was very explicit. You said I forced us to pay the invoice. That's a bit of an overstatement.
Work done.
That, that contract, okay, when you, when you have a construction contract, it has a schedule of values. In that schedule of values, there are line items for very specific items, as Mike has asked for the, any additional costs to reflect that same original information. So when a contractor issues an invoice, there are line items on there. It can include materials, it can include labor, it can include upfront costs for general conditions and things that have to happen. And that's a very standard way of doing business with a contractor. So the way you're couching this description is a little bit.
It was a bland invoice that came in. The clerk treasurer called and asked for.
A what?
It was just a plain invoice that came in. The clerk treasurer called and asked for an itemized invoice of what it was.
Every invoice is itemized.
No, it wasn't, not the first.
Well, I don't know what you're looking at, but the invoices that I saw are all itemized.
I have, I have a right to talk here too.
You can talk all you want. I'm just trying to answer your question. Go right ahead and talk whatever, however more, however much more you want to beat this dead horse, keep talking, man.
Okay, so we've got a motion to pay it. Chris, what are the consequences of this date that this invoice is due, comes and goes, and it's not paid?
Well, can I make one quick suggestion before you ask Chris that? How about this? If you, if you guys are willing to meet the fire commission next week, why don't we get together and take a look at those costs together, Mike, okay? If you guys have some time next week, let's have a fire commission meeting. We're going to meet with the Public Safety Design Group and the Building Corporation on the 19th on Monday at 9:00 AM. How do you guys look, I'm talking about the two members to my right who are part of the fire commission. How do you guys look for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week?
I'll be at the university should go to the hospital. Not looking forward to that.
Okay. So you don't have any availability next week?
Not next week. I don't know how long I'll be there.
Okay.
Hopefully I will be.
Mike, do you have some availability next week?
Yeah, I can make, I can make it work. My mornings are in pretty good shape.
I am too. So you pick one. We've got a budget working group meeting on the nine o'clock on the 20th. We could do it after that if you want.
That'd be fine.
Okay. How about we say, I'm imagining that working group's going to go more than an hour. You want to go 11 o'clock?
That'd be fine.
And then if you're able, John, then that'd be 11 on the 20th.
That's what I get.
Oh, you, well, is there a better day and you want to try?
Well, I, you know, they said they're going to keep me in, so I don't know what we need to, you know, I don't know, I want to be covering.
Well, how about we meet and then we'll.
Yeah, we can call you.
Okay. Okay, so if we're going to, if we're going to table this now, then we need a date certain that we need to pay this invoice by.
Well, my suggestion, let me finish my suggestion. If Mike and I can get together on the 20th as the fire commission, this will be a public meeting, we can discuss the costs, or we can do it with just, if it's just the two of us, we can just hammer out the cost so he knows what's going on. Oh, boy. So let's do that 11 o'clock on Tuesday, Mike. And I would suggest we'd have a special council meeting then shortly thereafter so that we can decide what we're doing with the invoice and then also present the costs, and then the council has to weigh in on which of these costs so that we can finish up the 100%. That's the only thing holding up that 10%, Mike, is what we choose to either add or to subtract from the, as I've tried to keep you in mind, keep you abreast of, there's some things where if you save some money, there's some things that are going up. So if you're willing to take a look at them on the, on the 20th? Does anybody have any availability for a special council meeting the rest of that week?
I think that's a good idea. I have to look at my calendar, so let's, let's take a look at it.
Is this a special meeting, Bob?
It'll be a special meeting, yeah.
I might open Thursday and Friday.
We can have it in the holiday end. I don't care where we have it. So what, what are we, do we have any availability or do you want to wait or?
I'd have to see my calendar, but give me, give me, give me when it has to be done and I'll get something out.
Well, again, what I'm, what I'm trying to get accomplished, we've, again, we tried to keep this thing moving forward.
Yep.
We've got a couple of hiccups with the septic and the building permit, which we had one version approved already. And now we're back trying to resubmit. So we had a septic permit and a building permit in hand before things got mucked up. But so I'd like to have the ability to tell the contractor that he can start stripping that asphalt next week so that when the building shows up the week of the 26th, he's got the ability to take delivery of it and set it down rather than us starting to pay dunnage on this building sitting on trailers. So that's why I would like to do the public, or rather the council, special council meeting that week of the 19th.
Week of the 19th. Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can do and the.
And see when Coker can come.
All right, I'll see what I can do.
I'll come as soon as I need it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to table this for now?
I second it.
Call favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
But now before we leave this subject, is it all right with everybody? I mean, we have this contract with this contractor. Is it all right if they start stripping the asphalt the week of the 19th so they can take delivery of the building?
No. No.
I'd say no.
Hey.
You know, this is getting a little crazy.
Guys, so calm down.
Okay, so you're, so what would you prefer? What, are you willing to sit still for the dunnage then, or how do you want to proceed?
We have a contract with Halliday for 2.5 million.
Right.
Which we will honor. But, but as far as making decisions on stripping asphalt right now, and I have not seen, I've not personally seen, nor has the town council seen, final cost numbers, I'm not. And that, and by the way, that has to come back to town council because the way we approved the 2.5 million on December 27th is any increase in that original amount would have to come back for approval to the town council. So right now, we're in, we're in a, we're in a void and I don't like it. And I want to know where we are from a cost standpoint.
And I just want to clarify on the, on the heels of that, Mr. Johnstone, that each of the invoices and each of these pay thresholds, the way that it has been set up is that everything will come before you.
I understand.
Even though Clerk Perry or aren't the authorized lesser representatives for the building corp, nobody's being put in that position except for you, so that you have control over the costs.
I'm now talking though about the total cost.
No, no, I'm with you. I want to explain for the public because that hasn't been clear. So I'm dovetailing on the back of yours is despite the clerk or the town administrator being able to authorize the payment so that the trustee who holds the bond funds can release them, nothing is going to be released unless and until the council.
So to clear this up a little bit further, Mike, the, the building itself and the delivery and the site demo are part of that 2.5.
I understand.
They're not going to change.
I understand. But if you come in, if a number comes in, I'll just use a number, don't take, don't be offended by it. The number comes in that now the total cost for this construction is 2.9 million, $400,000 more than we approved back in December 27th, I'm going to have a problem with that.
Well, we have to decide whether we want to pay for those additional dollars at that point, right?
Or scale the project. Of course, I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to at this point vote for an addition to the 2.5 million.
That's fine, but that's not what we're considering tonight.
But it is.
Considering tonight is paying a bill for the part of the 2.5 that is ongoing and is essentially been costs that have been incurred. So I'm confused why we're.
Well, what we've, what we've agreed to do, I believe, because I heard the motion in the second, was we're going to meet on Wednesday, we're going to do a special town council meeting within a time period that I think is reasonable and we can decide at that, at that time.
And you call for a vote. So when, when are we meeting now?
We're going to try and do it sometime the week of the.
We're meeting Tuesday and then we're going to schedule a special.
So Tuesday is the fire commission meeting?
Budget meeting and then also the public safety building discussions on costs at 11 o'clock on Tuesday, the 20th. That's what we scheduled.
With the fire commission.
Yeah.
Right. But then we need a special council meeting to.
I understand, I understand that. That date has not been set.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to understand. So 11 o'clock is the, is the meeting that you and I are talking about?
Right.
Okay.
That'll be before the week of the 19th, right?
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to be instructed at this meeting that the portions of the 2.5 that the contractor wants to accomplish in the next two weeks, you do not want them to accomplish.
I want, I want, I want what I've asked for, which is to understand what the total costs are on this project.
I understand that. And any extra additional costs, as we all agreed all the way through this process, we're going to have to be approved by the council.
That is correct.
But the procedure, the progress on the building though. So the, so the, the progress that we're making on the original contract dollars, meaning the building delivery and starting on site demo, you do not want that to occur?
That is correct.
Under, and what's the logic behind that?
Because I don't know the total cost of the project yet.
What's that got to do with the 2.5 that we're trying to get accomplished?
Well.
Well, hopefully you'll find that out at your meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, but let me reiterate, the building's coming the week of the 26th. You're, you're not going to allow them to deliver the building, you're not going to allow them to do the site work to accommodate the delivery of the building because you haven't seen the, the extra cost that we're all going to vote on anyway.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it was December 27th that we approved 2.5 million.
Correct.
Then a contract was signed with the construction company.
Correct.
And since then, we've been waiting for total cost in this project. It would be approximately six months that we've been waiting for that information.
Not exactly six, but I'm with you.
All right, well, let's just say it's five and a half. I don't really care. Let's say it's five. I'll round it down.
I've been telling you all along that the design team's been working on all these changes.
Well, the design team needs to finish that project. Who's, who's heading this project up?
Sorry?
Who's heading the project?
Meaning what?
Who's the manager? Who's the person who's actually running this thing?
Representing the town. I've been representing the town since the start of it.
Who is running the group that's coming up with the costs? Who's in charge?
Who's running the group? I would say I am.
All right. Why, John, why don't we have total cost yet?
Because we've been working hard at it. We're trying to get it. We wanted, I wanted to get a present, as I told you before, John did not want to see a partial presentation. I didn't want to see a partial presentation. All the way up until about a week ago, we were still assembling costs. And as far as that goes, with the disruption in the septic permit process that some people have instigated, we still don't know what that's going to cost because of some of those issues. But we're moving forward on the things that we can control and the things that were part of the 2.5. So that's what I'm trying to differentiate between a construction contract for a building that we all authorized to be built.
For $2.5 million.
Yes. And the additional work that we're going to talk about in the coming couple of weeks.
I don't, I'm not aware of any additional work. We, we approved $2.5 million.
Bob, let's move on.
Okay, so we've.
We tabled that.
And we're going to, I'm going to set up a special meeting the week of the 19th.
Yep.
You guys are going to get together at the time of building commission meeting.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have more information at that special meeting. Lake Shore Drive Water Service Replacement Schedule and Haas Engineering Water Department, Lake Shore Drive Solicited Bids. So I think our schedule came out, right, Mark?
It did. Last fall, the council approved for the water department to move forward with the accusation of the materials necessary for the water tap upgrades that affects 140 homes along Lake Shore Drive. This is the final phase of the water tap upgrades for the water department. IDEM, we are required by October of 2024 to report the type of gooseneck that each home has and the other piping material. So therefore, we're asking tonight to allow, all the materials are in, and we're allowing, asking the council to allow the water department to instruct Haas Engineering to send out the bid package to solicit bids. That will then come back to this council for a final approval for the upgrade of the water tap on Lake Shore Drive. And all of this will be paid for out of the water department's current capital revenue account.
And Mark, would you remind them that the reason we're doing this, some of those are the original water taps?
That is correct.
So they're very old, older than me, so.
I make a motion to do what Mark said.
I second it.
Discussion. Call favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comments.
I have a comment.
Come on out.
Well, wait, wait till you get up.
Start talking here.
And then you have to give your name and address.
Got it. I'm Carol Torme at 1706 Lake Shore Drive. And my specific comment is, I would like the council to consider the selective enforcement that goes on in the town of Long Beach. My husband and I, I have owned our property for more than 20 years. Every single fall, we put up a barrier of some kind, snow fence or whatever, to try to minimize, I mean, how much snow gets dumped on us. I mean, excuse me, sand gets dumped on us. And some years it's worse than others. Okay? So this past fall, we, our next door neighbor immediately shares our property line to the west. Last year, had fixed pieces of plywood to their fence. And they had a fraction of the sand that we had. So we thought, well, that was a good idea. We're going to do that too. So we got our plywood and we were putting it up. And then I got paid a visit by Lou Mellon, who told me that, he gave me a ticket for doing it, told me that the town was never going to approve it. I said, have we violated an ordinance? Have we broken a rule or a law? And his answer was, no. Someone, we don't know who it was, but someone, the town had a judge that it was an eyesore. So we are very peaceful people. I just didn't want trouble. We took the plywood down. I came to the town hall, paid my fee, my fine, and just went on with my life. This spring, we were still in our winter residence, and on Mother's Day, we had three friends of ours that sometimes we let their families use our beach and, very, very nice people. On Mother's Day, they were on our lawn and with shovels and rakes and brooms, were trying to put some of the sand back onto the beach. It's a new one here. We, Chief Swestick sent his deputy to my home, and we received a $1,000 ticket this time for putting sand back onto the beach. Now, I mean, I, I, I'm sure you can just imagine some of the feelings we had. But we waited, and then I contacted the chief and I said, how many times have you cited people for the infringement of moving sand from their fenced-in lawn back to the beach? I feel so special because guess what? We're the only ones. So I, I think, I don't know exactly who it is, whose skin we have gotten under. But finally, the first citation we received in the fall was because someone thought that our attempt to protect ourselves from the sand was an eyesore. And when I talk about selective enforcement, this is currently present in our town.
Ma'am, it'd probably be best to take this up with the building commission as opposed to us, that this isn't really kind of our purview.
Well, I don't expect that anybody's going to do anything to give me relief.
Well.
But I do think that it is an issue for the town council to understand that it's not right to selectively enforce.
Again, the building commission would be the best people to talk to.
Against some people and not others.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hello, my name is Vicky's neighbor. I'm at 2305 Lake Shore. So this is a small town, and I've only lived here about four years, but it's a really small town. And I just want to say that I think it's unconscionable that certain council members would brag in a public place that they've put the kibosh, so to speak, on a project, that being the public safety building, that received overwhelming support from our community. So I would ask that if you have specific, I love the candid commentary that we have. It's uncomfortable and all of that, and I think there's room for more respectful conversation. But I think if you're in a public place and you're bragging that you put the kibosh on something, again, that the public supported overwhelmingly, I think it's really unfortunate. The septic system mysteriously became a problem. So it would be good for the community to know how that actually happened, to have full transparency about that. You know, again, I think septic is an important thing for all of the community, and I think it's, it's a legitimate concern. But how we had approval and then didn't have approval is a mysterious question. And hopefully, we can get this all behind us and move on. I think in the four years I've seen, we have a, we seem to feel better sometimes if we have a project that started and stopped and we've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars, as opposed to working through the tough stuff and getting it done. So I hope that we can continue to work. And again, I don't think that the community support that we had has gone away. We are still very supportive of this and for our public safety officials to bust their asses every single day to protect us. And many of them are busting their asses for free. Lastly, I would say, I wanted to actually talk about at the February meeting, a motion was approved for four members of the council to talk to the SBOA about whether a third-party audit would be appropriate. And we haven't seen this item on the agenda, the public agenda, since then. So audits look at compliance and controls. And I feel that if appropriate controls were in place, we wouldn't have missed numerous payments. We wouldn't have late fees that we've incurred. We wouldn't have had so many of the problems that you've discussed at these meetings. So I think it's important that three things happen, that we verify, Mr. Perry actually said that at, on the 13th, the March 13th meeting, he said he spoke to the SBOA at an event at the Blue Chip Casino, and that they said that there was nothing to be concerned about relative to how his office conducts its, its business. So I think it's important to do these three things. Verify in writing that the SBOA believes there are no concerns. Understand from the SBOA if a third-party audit should occur, and report back to the community at a future meeting. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Boyce.
Hi, Bob Boyce, stop 29. I really do believe that this public safety building, everything should be just the way it should be because we are leasing this property from a private corporation. And it's not going to be owned by the town. So as far as everything, as far as permits, septic, and everything else goes, the responsibility for all this is going to end up with the town for 22 years. So it should be done right at the, at get-go, not down the road. And I can understand that there's going to be delays here. But it better we have delays and everything's correct now than worry about it later. And I think the way we should be looking at this is that the title for the property, for the proposed public safety building, has been transferred to the public safety building and LLC Corporation. They are not part of the town. It's a private corporation, and it was done so that they could build a 10,000 square foot building to be leased to the town for use by the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department, another private corporation. So the problem I see, and it may not be a problem, is that we'll be connecting a privately-owned building, basically a pretty large structure, to a municipal septic system. And I don't know if you can cross-connect like that. And so we're going to have a privately-owned corporation hooking up to, and cross-connecting to a municipal septic system owned by the town, to be used by another private corporation. And I think that should be addressed along with the rest of it. Now, whether or not it's going to cause a problem, I don't know. But it should be resolved. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else?
Tom's neighbor, 2305 Lake Shore Drive. As John said earlier, we're in a situation where you voted to approve this public safety building. You had an approved building permit. You had an approved septic permit. You refused to take yes for an answer. And some of you worked behind the scenes and bragged about it to people in the public that you're trying to circumvent this process. Just want everybody to be aware of that.
Anita Remages, 2300 Floramond. I just want to talk about a few things. One, Vicky, you mentioned respect and civility. And Tom, you mentioned how far back this has gone, and it's gone back tremendously far. And I, you know, I appreciate that people come here. But I think that there is some respect and civility to be shown to the people sitting at this table, whether or not you agree with them. There's swearing going on back there. There's all kinds of discussions. Where were you all a year ago? Where were you December? Where, where were you when this has been being talked about for eons? When, when this blank invoice or whatever came up, did you not say to somebody, oh, hey, this is a blank invoice? Or you reached out to a clerk treasurer's office? I mean, you know, I, I get the feeling that the campaigning has already started. Mr. Coker raises his voice, Mary Lou, you're, you know, busy about invoices that came back. So again, respect and civility. Clerk Treasurer, I think we need to really look at a problem in people that are here that haven't been attending meetings. You might want to look at the last several, the last year or so of meetings about our clerk treasurer. Even just tonight, you talked about, you know, we, we, we need to have Sender and Company, you know, a more active role because of change in employees. There has been misinformation. There has been money returned. There have been checks returned. IRS is now billing the town because employee tax returns aren't paid on time. Or employees aren't even paid when they're supposed to be. They get paid on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or a Thursday. I just hope the residents are informed and listening to the council meetings and special council meetings about misdeeds, inactions, and just overall lack of attention to the job by Clerk Treasurer Perry. My last comment is whether the town has ever had a daycare for kids, for their employees, because apparently there is a doggy daycare here at Town Care, at Town Center for Clerk Perry's dog. He drops the dog off and then he leaves. So it seems to me two things. Who's responsible for the dog? And what are, what are the hours? And when can I leave my dogs? And what is the town liability in case there's an incident, in case there's a bite while Clerk Perry is off doing something other than his job? Thank you.
Any other public comments here?
Bob, you have a comment?
Hold on, Mike, we're, we're, we'll get to Zoom. We've got one more comment here, I think.
Dave Albers, 2208 Oriole Trail. Comment was made a few minutes ago about private corporations. I just want to clarify, as I was standing on the lobby, there's a plaque, excuse me, 2001 was when this building was dedicated. A building corporation was established to do the $1.2 million renovation here. It's the same vehicle that was, is being considered for the safety building. So for those people in the audience and watching, you just need to have the facts. And sometimes we go off to the right and to the left. If we can stay on center and deal with the facts. Thank you.
Now, public comments on some Zoom. Mr. Konzai.
Two comments. Number one, we talked earlier about the hiring of the fire department in 2028. In the past, we've made sure that we had a written job description for every position that we hired. I hope we've got a job description for this specific position. And we all want the person to be doing what they're working on. Second item is, I'm not delaying with PowerPoint and the telecommunications power, but if there's negotiations going on in the future, whoever's controlling that power and the connection to telecommunications, we ought to be negotiating for some small cell transmission towers, they have a power to put on like light posts, be put up and down Lake Shore Drive so we get better communication throughout the town. So small cell towers, we need to, from the安装 power plant, we can do that, but we got to, that's it, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else on Zoom with public comments?
Got one more here.
This is Jim Dieter. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So 2300, there's probably, there's many comments I can make, but the five, my two items I wish to discuss tonight is the fact that I was at that December 27th meeting, last year, when the council asked, going forward for this funding. I have to say, most of the town was not here, whether our people were in Florida or Arizona, or they were still in the Chicago area, or somewhere else in the country celebrating with their families since it was two days after Christmas. What I did see is, every member of the fire department that I kind of know and at sea, they were there, the families were there, they spoke at force, and it was well done. And I will say, somewhat orchestrated. However, I am a prominent volunteer fire force. So what I did see is, it was overwhelming at that particular meeting, but not necessarily by the whole town, because the whole town is not, even aware of this meeting was going on, because it was two days after Christmas. And if they were aware, they weren't out there. But that's one. The other point, if I may continue just for a moment, is the fact that the project seems to be, it's, it's been on its way. It's almost a runaway train. But pump and dump is the first time I've heard that phrase used today, other than for some properties on the lake in the past. And in my thought process, I always thought that diminished the worthiness of a project and obviously the worth of those properties on Lake Shore Drive. So if that's the only option, or that's the final option, I'm sure there's a cost to that in addition to everything else, and that will be an ongoing cost for that small thing, of which I know people have talked about in the past, that could be buying expense over time. So hopefully that's the rest, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Okay, thanks. Let me get quick. Yes, Mary O'Neil, 1532 Lake Shore Drive. Couple of things. Some of it's just maybe housekeeping. Even though I'm not here all the time, I am on a lot of the Zoom things, and I always like to go and see what the agendas are before I go on to a meeting. And rarely are agendas up prior to a meeting. And I believe, because I looked online with the state, and there is a statute that agendas are supposed to be posted prior to meetings. So I would, I don't know who's in charge of the website or who puts up agendas, but I would encourage you to do that because I think you'd have a more, a better informed populace. Then the other thing, Chief had mentioned that they were able to apply for some grants. And I think this has been brought up before, and I hope that the fire people are also looking into grants for some of these projects that, that we're doing for the town. And along with the building stuff, I was wondering, since now I understand there are going to be some brick facade, that's a big expense in construction. And I'm wondering if that will affect how things go. So again, good luck with the budget, and thank you. Excellent. Any council comments? Claims approval?
Town checks, 19820 to 19888 totaling $171,324. Water Department checks, numbers 54706 to 54722. Water Department checks, numbers 54706 to 54722 totaling $82,496.45. May payroll, $77,339.25. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I second, I second it.
Hall favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, do a adjourn.
I second it.
Hall favor?
Aye.